I thank everybody here. I'll go ahead and call out this meeting agreed for information to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Y'all got the minutes in or emailed. They will have any corrections or additions at the minute. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes that's submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. First item on the agenda this evening is an update on Nathan Gilbert's property. And Kathy, you want to give us an update on that?
I'm going to relax Scott.
Alright Scott.
He has the roof or he has the ceiling dropped or the roof of the trailer dropped.
Okay.
I think part of the metal off the roof has been removed. And he is, someone is slowly working on it, so it's not inhabitable anymore. So I think as long as he stays with it, probably within another month, he should have it all wrapped up.
Alright, does that meet the needs of the board member? Well, this is progressive.
As long as he's doing.
Well, this was the update, wasn't it Kathy? Actually.
Yeah. I did not check on it today. I apologize. He may have it all cleaned up. I don't know.
And he's not here tonight to give us progress points, so assuming his absence would indicate that's complete. We've met the requirements we've given. Alright, if there's no further discussion on Nathan Gilbert's building, we may just have that as an item in the next meeting, just make sure to close the loop on that. Next item on the agenda is the annexation of part of the St. Mary's property. And who was going to address that Kathy?
I was going to say something. And what I just passed out was some notes which I received today. It looks like there's just a few items that needs to be addressed. That's it. So I think Gary Murray is probably pretty happy with what you've seen so far in the drainage, just except for these fuel items.
Yes, I've been working with Rich on the drainage. He sent me a revised table today. He's going to be, sending me a revised full report later in the week.
Would someone like to just explain your requests for the annex?
Oh, we're adding something. There's two parcels. I think I sent you all copies.
Yep.
The two parcels, portion for the cemetery, the St. Creek Cemetery, and then the southern one for the St. Mary's property. There is approximately 1.35 acres in the St. Creek Cemetery portion, and approximately 1.46 in the St. Mary's. This is just so all the roadway area would be within the city limits because on their overall site plan, which is another sheet up, the roadway would end and then it would be a city street, then become a town. So they're requesting for all the cities to, the roadway and driveway would be dedicated to the city. Now, this would be your site. See, there's the, oh, there it is. Okay. This is, let's see. It'd be like this portion of the cemetery here, where it goes through the lines there of the roadway for the St. Mary's. So basically, this, all that would be the city street, dirt line wise.
So does that consider like their deacceleration lane to enter their lane, to their new road, along their cemetery, or it's coming up along the side here?
Yes, that'd be a cap.
Okay, so they have room to get off the road?
Yeah, they have to divide into cities. Not by city, but on that, and then just divide into cemetery.
When they've gotten their Endot permit.
And would that note speed limit be changed there?
No, I don't know. It'd be entirely up to Endot. Kathy will probably do a traffic study, and then see how many accidents ever occur to determine whether the speed limit is changed. Has things changed since then?
It will be reduced a little closer, a little further away from town.
Because right there is where the braking point is.
Right.
Because it's like 55 prior to getting to the road now.
Right, it's going to go down to 45.
I go that way every day. It starts right at 100 and 150 is where it goes 55.
Okay, and the road is south of that?
Just south of that.
Okay.
See, 100 and 150 are here. Right here's where the speed limit changes down, so that would be.
Yeah, it would go back further.
Right.
And it's gone back about 500 feet, I think.
And remain 45.
Okay. And I had another question about it as well. I noticed when you go there and driving, it drove quite often, that it's like a no passing one direction. Do you have intentions of maybe making that no passing in both directions until they're getting out past that new road?
I would think so with the new intersection, but, I mean, that's all been submitted to Endot. It actually, they didn't approve it in Seymour District, they approved it downtown Indianapolis, so it's had quite a bit of scrutiny.
Yeah, I just noticed when I go after that direction, you know, just taking.
Well, the pavement markings are in the approved, in those plans.
You have to pass there and what?
Well, that's the problem they do. That's, you know, it happens a lot, because they're going out of town, and they're ready to get around again. That was my thing.
But they're also relocating 150s.
Yeah, the road across the road, yes.
It's not exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Except for 100.
That's it. And the whole cemetery is what we're looking at, right? It's just where this line is through there?
That's why you've got two maps.
Okay. Where the start lines are here?
Basically, it's just right there.
Okay, oh, sorry. I just, that's my deacceleration line is my biggest question. So like I told you, now they have enough carry weight, all of a sudden, you get all their, not being, we're in, across the.
Yeah, that's entirely, that's in Endot.
Yeah. I guess, I think this, the Endot being answered the recent questions on that.
I, first Gary Murray, Gary knows the.
Do you have an Endot, or can you answer this question on what?
We could get copies of the plans. We had a meeting with the parish and Endot and all the utilities talking about when they plan on starting construction.
Okay.
The Endot representatives had indicated that they had approved the set of plans that we were looking at.
Okay. Alright, Rich, do you have any contact that person?
Okay.
Something's blooming out there in the sneaking all day. Are there any comments from the audience on this?
And one of the reasons for the annexation is the difference in the street cross-section between county and city, and where responsibility for plowing would start and stop. It didn't make sense to have a quarter mile of it be city and another 500 feet be county, and then you switch from a curbed pavement section to side ditches and everything else, and the county would not accept the curbed road, even though that's what we would have liked to have seen. But they said they wouldn't accept that, so it was just easier for them to.
Clean it up.
Clean it up.
It just makes it more, and my personal, it's just mine only. It's the thing to do. I mean, they're a church, they help the community in a time of need, and I think it's our time to help them.
And the other thing is, we wanted a sidewalk along the entire roadway section, which, again, county roads don't have. Because we've been trying to get, work with Endot to get a trail from that point into town. So once we've got something out there, it's easier to say, hey, we want to continue this.
Okay, thanks Gary. Any comments from the audience from non-signing employees? I'll take that to them. Any further comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and annex the property as Kathy described into the city. So moved for a second?
Second.
And Nancy, we have a roll call vote. And before we do that, point of order, my understanding is, since we have two of those property owners, Tom and Ruth, and according to code, they're not able to vote on it.
They are able to vote on this.
But not the plot?
But not the side.
Alright, I stand corrected, thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Rory?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
The property is annexed from this board, and then I will take that to the city council meeting. It won't be Thursday, it'll be two, the first.
Fourth of?
Yeah, first.
That day in April.
That day, or just the fourth, I think. Fourth of that, I believe. Anyway, I'll present that to the city council for approval, and upon approval, then the property will officially be annexed. Next item on the agenda is the St. Mary's site plan, and Kathy, who am I going to address that?
Sorry, I jumped in.
Just continue where you were going.
Finished with the drainage, you and Rich have spoken.
Yes. What we've done with even the parcels that are not being developed at this time, since the overall development is over 10 acres, we're holding even the smaller undeveloped parcels to a stricter drainage runoff requirement for parcels that are over 10 acres, which takes the post-developed runoff to the pre-developed five instead of the pre-developed 10 for the entire parcel. So we've been, we've been working on getting that straightened out and on all the drainage exhibits, and they're, I think, prepared to make a commitment to do that. So it gets in the minutes, and everybody knows that that's a requirement in sight.
So this email from Rich Kelly, he's going to get that to you by the end of the week, this drainage?
A revised report, yes.
Board of members.
Because he had to use some calculations. I want to see calculations on the undeveloped portions being held back to that requirement.
Okay. Any questions from the members of the board, Gary, or Kathy on this one?
Same with erosion. Jeff Smith and Inquire were saying anything about any problems with the erosion control plan?
There were a couple items, Rich and I, that he was not able to come to our review meeting. And I live on the north side of Indy, which is pretty close to Rich's office, so we met one morning for breakfast and reviewed a set of marked up plans. And Jeff and I had talked about the erosion control, and we added some silt fence, and had some concerns about some exiting velocities of the wet, or the dry ponds. Are those dry, no, those are wet, Rich, right?
I think.
At the southwest corner of the side.
I have drawn that.
Yeah. So really, we're adding silt fence all along the roadway between the two drives, so we couldn't have trucks exiting wherever they wanted to while that was under construction to try to keep a lot of that mud off the road.
Other than that, there's just a couple of details that were wrong on the plans, those that were correct. I think that was like the plan. All the utilities, I mean, everyone's worked together, it's promised to make it work, probably it happens. I don't know, I can't, I know Scott had a few questions, and I think those questions have been answered.
Yep, I'm good.
So, for the most part, I think all the departments are pretty happy with what we've seen and opinions that they were willing to make when we asked, so.
So the city's cool with the plot?
The city is fine.
Any, any questions from the board? If not, I entertain questions from the audience?
I have a question.
You go ahead, identify yourself.
My name's Steve Herbert. I'm property joint landlord. Is the street going to turn over to the city once this project's over?
Yes.
That's a intention.
Yes, I'm sorry, Andy.
I'm Andy Beats, I'm the business manager with St. Mary's Parish. And our intention is to turn the street over to the city, Hunter Robbins Way, when we get completed or when it's acceptable for the city, Gary and his group.
Okay, and the street lights going to get turned over then too, also?
Yes.
Usually that happens, yeah.
And then working to divide the street lights off from the parking lot area? Oh, not the, whatever they have in their parking lot is there.
Is there, okay. Any other comments?
I did have a question.
Yes ma'am.
You guys were discussing the Endot plan. Possible that adjoining property owners could see that Endot plan?
Gary, would that be made available to the joining property owners, or the contact person?
Yeah, I don't have them yet, but I will, I will get them. Tom, weren't you going to email those out after that meeting? Sir, I thought, weren't you going to email those plans out to everybody?
I thought we did.
Because they had not been distributed. I have not seen them.
Okay, I thought we had done.
Gary, my name's Rich Kelly, I'm the civil engineer. We did the drawings for the Endot plans. When I get you the revised plans based on the erosion control comments that we need to address, I will include a hard set of the Endot plans.
Okay.
So that you can have them in your office if people want to look at them.
Thank you Gary.
So what, by the first of the week, you think you'll have?
Yes.
Is that good enough Kathy?
Send them out Thursday, late in the.
I got another question.
Yes sir.
What's proposed plan to finish this project?
Tom, can you answer that?
Yeah, I'm Tom Burns with Brunswick Gas Flare. We'll be ready for August next year, which is in what, 2012?
Okay.
About a 14-month schedule.
No, that's, that's what we consider phase one, which is the road and the school. Our intention is to build a church out there too, but we don't have the funding right now. But that'll be down the road. And to answer your question, there are some other things that need to go into that also. But the overall plan, and the scope of the overall plan is in the plans right now, as far as what the engineers have drawn up.
I got one more question.
So St. Mary's owns the whole property then?
St. Mary's?
So this, this whole project, if somebody wants to divide off, does St. Mary's own the other, the other ground?
St. Mary's owns 44 acres out there, which is both sides of the street right now.
Okay.
One more question.
Yes ma'am.
The farm ground, that's not going to be developed right now, this summer, is it going to be pre-putting anything, or is it going to be mowed?
We will, we will take care of that ground. Last year, we put soybeans in there.
And the pasture ground up behind, it's never been mowed.
Is that the?
The, down there by the creek?
By the waterway on the south side?
Yes.
Okay. Our intention is to be good neighbors and to do what needs to be done, you know, to keep it acceptable to the neighborhood. Let me just put it down there.
Any more questions?
I might ask myself from the board. My name's Bruce Fockover. You know, my office is in the seat back here. I'm a joint property owner, and we have a homeowners association there in Mill Ridge Estates, which is located just west of this project. And I was asked to bring these questions before the board and yourselves, by some of the people in our committee. And I know we were talking, Gary, about the undeveloped parcels, that all the specs haven't been approved yet for the, like the dry detention ponds. Those are the ones, or is that the ones next to the two acres that's not developed, or is that, is that a site to be sold and developed?
I would assume they would try to spend that off in development, but what I've been working on is the allowable runoff.
Okay.
From those parcels that are not proposed to be developed yet.
Okay.
So that we have something in writing that shows that this was all master planned to have the entire 44 acres be a single project, which would be held to that tighter runoff standard. Not that, okay, now we've got a two-acre parcel, and because it's two acres and a different developer's going to develop it, then it gets to run off the 10-year predeveloped rate.
Okay.
And that's, those are the runoff numbers. So at every outlet point, you're giving me calculations of what would come out of a needed detention facility for those parcels, and we add them all together. And so at each pipe where it leaves, we've got a predeveloped five rate, and we've got a 100-year post-development rate, and they match.
Okay.
For the entire site.
Well, they're, the concerns were, some of the homeowners were, like, we had a two-inch rain, and I was asked to take pictures, and I'd give them to the street commissioner. I suppose he brought them to your attention, let you see how high the water got.
He did, and, I mean, the site is under construction right now. They do, did have two layers of silt fence, one right in front of the pipe that went under the road, and about 50 feet up from that, they had another one. The silt fence did its job. It did not let the water through, and it created a two-foot pond.
Well, that's true. What they're concerned about, they seem, seem to think that the bean stubble from the crop that mounted up in front of the drain might have.
Certainly didn't help either. But you're trying to.
Yeah.
Prevent all of that stuff from getting in the street.
Into pond.
And so it did its job, and, you know, eventually, that will get cleaned up before they leave the site. That's all part of our erosion control inspections that we do, being in MS4.
And those were some, those were just some of the questions they might wanted me to ask, because they were concerned if the water got across the road and hydroplane were taking effect and accidents were to occur, you know, just that, you know, they wanted to make sure to take every precaution necessary, you know, take safety into mind. And some of the people that live on the pond think that, you know, if it gets up there, it erodes away from the soil underneath it, and the road starts breaking off and creates problems as well. And that'd be all the questions I have this time.
You can rejoin us if you'd like to.
Okay.
Any other questions from the audience? If not, if no other concerns from the board, I entertain a motion to approve the St. Mary's site plan.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you Lynn. I think a roll call vote, Nancy. And this time, Bruce and Tom are still abstaining, like, uh.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Rory?
Yes.
And Lynn?
Yes.
Very good. Then the site plan is approved. Does that need to go to the council?
Yes.
Alright, I'll take that to the council, April 4th.
And all of this is basically held in the state, that's saying what this board has done. That's it. No further actions either. It's just a statement of the.
Thanks. The annexation will have to be added on by the council with this.
Thank you for your consideration.
No problem, thank you. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is the Freeland Road extension, and the regulation on that , Kathy.
And I, you guys were called back in January, we did a Seymour, or a committee, we have a board committee. We met a few times, and came up with an idea for the driveway for the extension of Lincoln Street, or less, instead of Freeland Road. So it doesn't, whether we call it Lincoln Street, or we call it Freeland Road, that should be. Back January this year.
They're surrounded.
Gary Murray submitted to Endot an application for runway functional classification, and this is necessary to become eligible for future funding. I guess what we're here to ask is, you know, to move forward with this, and we're waiting still on the classification?
We are waiting on the classification. The question now is, Endot has a call for Group Three, which is smaller cities and towns that are represented by a metropolitan planning organization, if we want to submit an application to them for future funding, then whether or not we want to go forward, move forward with that. The funding is probably several years out, but.
At least.
When we submit an application for this, we have to commit a local match, like in the blankets here.
Which, you know, there is the tip, money's that will, eventually, it's growing for that area. That was part of the comprehensive plan. So I guess what we're asking is, is something you want us to move on, or to hold off on?
I don't know that everybody now, since we've had membership changes, is familiar with what we're talking about. At one time, it was thought that Freeland Road might extend on over to 421, okay, from where it is, their dead ends at Walmart now, basically, or Walgreen. There was consideration to extend that all the way over to 421. Well, looking at that, the committee, which I sort of, that's why I guess I'm talking, we decided that that wasn't feasible to go up through there, okay? Basically, Kathy, I'm going here. Basically, it was a right-of-way issue.
It was also a stacking issue of vehicles coming off.
Right, it was more of a stacking issue than it was right-of-way, wasn't it here? And that's, that's people waiting at that stoplight where you come off of 74. They wouldn't allow us to stack that many cars. If we went with a road that went on us, we'd get traffic backed up on the interstate, and that was completely. So, and this is all part of the comprehensive plan for, all in there, it asked us to look at and do this. So I guess, did the committee have a recommendation? Well, we came up with the idea of going Lincoln Street, okay? Instead of going Freeland Road, Lincoln Street will move us enough away from 74 to allow us to have, from Lincoln Street all the way up to stack cars in if you needed to, I mean, to that next stop sign if you needed to, which would still be way away from Interstate 74. And basically, the idea is that we would go between the bank and, what is it?
Tractor supply.
Tractor supply, and go on through that way and pick up, not the county road that exists now, but.
What did you understand?
But we would, what the idea was, practically from Walgreen, was to put another road out from there, so Run 50. What we, the idea was, long-term, was to put a cul-de-sac at the end of. What we, the idea was, long-term, was to put cul-de-sac at the end of, well, it's now Fifteenth Street or whatever that is, what do they call that now? One fifty north? Okay, so that wouldn't go out on the Moscow Road anymore. That would be a local drive for those people that live in Hillcrest Edition.
Now, but that would become a frontage road and we'd have a little maybe fifty-foot buffer out because you really don't want, if you're doing a material or a collector road, you really don't want all those homes having their driveways out on that. So you really want to keep those minimized in number curb cuts. So we would leave that as a frontage road and then build another road fifty feet long or something.
And then that would be our main road and then that would go on out to four twenty-one. So if you can kind of envision the route. But we're not, right now, right now, all we're looking at is, do we want to continue and approach this funding? Right now, we have to have a what?
It's what they call a group three call-out for projects. And so, once you have it on your comprehensive plan, you've got it in the functional roadway classification system of NDOT, then you can submit a project to them for consideration for funding.
So the project, we aren't even ready for right now, we're just, do you want to, the question is, as, the committee is, as a board, do we want to continue on, which would be?
Do we submit for a group three call-out?
Yeah, which allows us to be eligible for funds in the future. And at that time, then we actually look at building the road and all of those items.
Will there be any downsides to moving forward at this point?
That's Gary, as far as I know.
Short of commitment of funds?
Down the road, I mean, right now, we're not committing to anything just to move forward.
Well, if you submit a, for a group three call-out, you're, you're committing a local match.
We are committing, but.
So by moving forward, you're saying that we're committing ourselves to a local match at this point?
If we get funding. Now, we could get it turned out the first time. It could take two or three cycles to
There's, there's no guarantee that we'll even get the money for anything. But if we would, then we, yes, then we would have to come up with.
But we don't want to start engineering or environmental studies or any of that because you're committing your own funds at that point, which you can get part of that paid for through your current.
So, so the recommendation from the exploration committee was?
To continue forward.
Continue, continue forward, so that's.
Really, the HNTV study had four potential alignments, a preferred alignment, and we tweaked that one a little bit in this plan that you see. And then we've, again, submitted to NDOT for that functional classification, but.
So at some point down the road, if we would apply for a grant, or if we approved tonight, we are applying for a grant?
We would submit, yes.
Submit an application for a grant. And then if the grant is approved, at that point, would we be able to refuse the grant but it a local match?
I don't think you want to, no, when you submit your application for the group three project, we're already committed.
All right, and what?
I would suggest by doing this off in pieces.
What dollar amount?
Going from four twenty-one to Moscow Road.
What dollar amount match would we be looking at?
It could be an eighty, twenty, a ninety, ten.
Rough estimate?
The one in HNTV's plan is like twenty-four million dollars.
But that was for four lanes, right?
Yes.
So we're only talking two right now, correct?
Well, I've been talking with some other engineers and I, I would think we don't like Lincoln Street.
I mean, that's the busiest we've got. The suicide lane?
And we, we have a suicide lane in certain areas.
And that's parallel to one fifty?
True.
And then you have seventy-four parallel to that?
True.
Yes.
It's kind of drawn up where that should be.
Decision that could be many years out.
It could be. And even, even if they committed the function, they may be.
Which over the course of many years, things change. And you know, so you're submitting funding for a project of this nature, four or five years from now, it gets approved, but if things in the city change, are you locked into that?
Pretty close. I mean, if a developer wants to develop out in this area, we're going to keep to developing with that.
Okay, and part of the reason for this, again, is people have asked about developing out in that area. Well, they want to know what the city's going to provide because right now, we don't have to provide anything. And when that time comes, we can talk to the developer about what we want him to build and get him to take on some of that cost of portions of that.
And this road, I know some of that land's been sold, you know, investors have lots of that property, but they haven't done anything with it as of yet. But this road provided entrances.
They defaulted on it and it's gone back to two banks.
Has it really?
Yes.
Well, let's just say someone else was purchasing and they buy, it would buy on the north side of that road. So that would be like the road and the entrance to their businesses that they were choosing to develop there or?
And we might have wrote some banks about acquiring a right-of-way because if the right-of-way is there, it may become more valuable to them to know that the road's there and, and we're planning on, you know, nobody's developing it, but at least we're planning on putting part of it in with NDOT funds.
And then it would help to lead in some of the traffic going west there on the bypass as well if they want to be getting around the other area.
So I guess if the grant's approved, it'd be up to the city to come up with a match fund. That'd be bonding. But that would city.
We're going to bring, we're going to bring this up to the redevelopment commission.
Yeah, because this is all part of the tip we were reading too, so there's some.
See, there'd be tip.
Yeah. So I guess, do we need a? I guess, do we need a vote on this this evening or?
Need a recommendation.
All right. Well, three of the committee members, I'm assuming are in favor of this, Julie, Kevin, Bruce, and I, do you vote? What are your feelings on this?
I think it'd be, it'd be great to look out for our future and make plans in that direction, knowing that the infrastructure itself now is being looked at, running down four twenty-one along the seventy-four. And that might, depending on what land I use or, it might bring businesses back closer to that area before those areas are built.
Julie, what's your?
I'm thinking no right now because I, there's, I mean, there's a lot of homes in that area and it's, without hearing other people that live in that area, their opinion, I, I don't feel kind of moving forward with them not knowing that we may be moving forward on something even those five years from now. Just uneasy about it.
Kevin? I do think it would help traffic patterns and also maybe it would help develop, undevelop line up their whole future development.
The folks out there would have had a comment period on the comprehensive plan.
Right.
This is included in the comprehensive plan.
Right, and they did have a chance to be heard when HNTV did their Freeland Road order plan to, this presented to the economic development committee or the tip board. They had a chance, the property owners in it helped us have their opportunity to speak on this also at that time. Yes, we tweaked it, like Gary said, a lot, but we feel that's the best route for this. This also, as someone mentioned, sorry, was included in the comprehensive plan. So the people, people helped plan the comprehensive plan. They, they were the ones that said, yes, we like this, we want to see this forward someday. You know, there's no guarantees about a comprehensive plan, but it's their own reason.
In building that new roadway with a buffer to the existing one fifty, so that really becomes a frontage road, this should have very little impact on those homes.
On that side.
That front arm of one fifty.
What about the field area? What cons, they still live up there? That's the only house, that's the only home in that field area.
Yeah, east. Feet off the road.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure that I know exactly the location and what you're talking about.
And they did, they did have, they may have been here when we had the open house for the HNTV, when we did the comprehensive plan. There were people from that area, that neighborhood that were there and had very specific questions and unfortunately, at the time, we couldn't be, and still today, I can't tell you exactly where, you know, nothing's been laid out, there's been no pencil really put to anything so I think some questions you can't answer. The idea was though, to keep that separate. I really liked the idea that, that county road was not going to become part of that bypass so that people wouldn't have traffic moving at forty-five mile an hour in their front yard. You know, and that's, that was the idea of putting that buffer area in.
Who are we making the regulation to, Kathy? The subcommittee?
The subcommittee more or less, and then I guess then.
It'd be to Gary, I guess. Gary's more, yeah, it's more or less to Gary so that he submits it, right?
Does have anything bad to do with that.
So we put together.
I'm trying to find, you know, going during this pay. This one had to go to the council? What, that pays for it?
This part of things actually didn't have a location yet, is wouldn't we, don't we have to still have to have, do we have to have a formal application?
Yes, and that's what you would be making a recommendation on.
But it'd go before the board works, am I not correct? To be signed? Or a regular project?
I think, I think.
I think the redevelopment commission, if they're ordered to use the tip money as a matching funds.
It's the East Street on delivery.
Well, that's what I'm trying to avoid to that, a lot of these grants are all but done before, you know, oh, by the way, we need this to be bonded out after all this years of work has been put into it. And I, I think as long as, you know, it's taken out of the awareness, which I can report to the meeting on Monday, that we want to grant a recommendation forward, that's what we decided to do.
So, and I. I guess that way then we don't, they don't feel like we sprung something wrong.
Well, not so much that, it's just by the time it gets, you know, you're supposed to be making an independent decision and by the time it gets there, it's like an afterthought.
I know.
And I think it would just, it would sell better if along the way, everyone was involved, so that's my two cents, Gary.
Wouldn't you, couldn't you pass that subject to availability and funds through by council? So they're participatory?
Well, yeah, and this.
I mean, that's implied anyway.
Correct. And I'm not, I'm not saying that it's right or wrong to do it, I would say the perception to me has been, you know, by the time it gets to the council, it's all but done anyway. I guess at this point, I'd entertain the motion to move forward as recommended by the exploration committee.
So moved.
Do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Wait, I have a real call Nancy.
Bruce?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
So the recommendation is to have the sub, the exploration committee move forward with the.
Actually, it's Gary, in this point, it's Gary, but will you report on that then to the council?
Is the subcommittee meeting at this point directly?
No, we haven't yet. It's basically been Gary's report because he has to join, to work with NDOT review.
Okay. The last item on the agenda, Miss Lane's item, Joy had.
Yeah, on Baruchelle Lane, across the street from where Dave Bean's house was, are those, the, what are they, red, I believe? Duplexes that set across there. And Bruce, you might be, it looks to me like there's a window broken out again.
There is a window broken, there's several tree limbs laying down on top of the roof.
And it's just, I know that they're basically uninhabitable now and now that we have holes in the windows and maybe even roof damage, it's just going to get worse.
The only thing I can see though is like this, oh, it would be fresh because it had all the separation for animals to travel in and out and access for children to enter. I know it's not that bad yet.
No, but I, I guess I'm, I'm walking us to not let it get like the other one did, okay? So, I don't know, do, I guess we need to contact David again and make sure that that gets secure. I'm not sure it's secure right now, the way I see it driving by. I haven't been up to it, but I drive that every day going back forth to work. I'm almost positive that window's broken.
I think there is one that's broken out.
Sorry, love.
I don't see. Kathy, we'll give some suggestions and I don't disagree. Well, I'm saying that there are a lot of other dwellings in town that are worse shape than what that is. And I think we need a comprehensive list of any dwellings in town that need to be addressed and rather than just looking at these individually, it does seem to like make a singling individual out. I'd rather have a list of all of the dwellings within the singling because that's not an undoable task, I don't think.
I grew up past one the other day and I thought, oh, man, that needs to be.
And contact all of the owners of those properties and tell them that they need to get them in position with their safe because, you know, I just, I know there's at least a couple that come to mind that I think are worse shaped than what.
Right, it's just I drive by this, this is, when you drive by it every day, you just notice it, you know?
I've brought that point up because when, you know, when you're campaigning or anything more in order, I saw a whole house.
Dreading down?
Yeah, maybe that's one way to do it, but.
But didn't we just pass a new ordinance in the city, like spruce up your property? I believe it was in there Saturday or it's more, it's looking at being passed.
Well, it's, it's basically a nuisance, it's, it's basically remapping the weed ordinance.
Oh, it's just weeds at the.
Right, there's weed, junk, you know, if it talks about structures.
And shrubbery and trees.
It's just, you have to keep the building as far as automotive parts, you know, transmissions set in the front yard and.
Because I did rely on it, Eric said.
Well, it's bad, I can't put flowers in each one of those big things. So I don't know.
Well, I just, whenever I see, I'm like, Thomas, not just trying to pick on somebody, but I see, you see abandoned buildings, houses with broken windows, but I need to make sure we're addressing all of those, not just the one that I'm bringing up now.
And we are addressing for safety concerns.
Right.
In neighborhoods, not only just the settings, but we also safety concerns.
Well, if you have an ax, a building with access in it, we all know what goes on now in those buildings and unfortunately, that'll be what, one of those will be used for next. So that's all, I mean, I just.
I have one more, we might go back. I don't have my notes with me, but I think his name was Mr. Cullin, is that his name on Second Street where I had the big one down?
Yeah.
I know it's still the tree. Do you remember the deadline when I have to be getting there to get that piece carried up?
I know he was, he was, he's willing to get it out of there, he's just waiting for the weather to break, which it has now broke because.
I think we gave ninety days.
With the snow and everything, you couldn't get somebody in there to, to work on it.
I just thought maybe it's time when it was getting close, I didn't know, I just thought that maybe it's.
I could call though, we've had a trial channel to see.
He gave us good contact information, that was some of the problem that we had, was we had, we had contact information for Ryle Edition and then had moved from Ryle Edition to another house and, and you know, went to this house and didn't get forwarded and
One of the neighbors had brought it to my attention because they had acquired it before, so.
If you don't look in the opposite corner. If you don't look at my house, I got a big tree across my deck waiting for.
Yeah, I had a plant on that yesterday.
I don't doubt it. I'm doing my best. I need ninety days.
And the weather is great, right?
Well, I think he had some others, so I brought a storm was broken and.
I was going to be.
Fans or whatever, banding.
We're going to have to get you a notebook when you buy that truck right now. You'll see more of them than we will.
Any other items coming forward? Yes, Lynn?
I have one thing, and I don't know that we ever, this might be, oh, I think it's going to be on the next program for the year. We, we approved.
This is a VZA thing.
Oh, never mind, sorry.
Wrong committee.
Wrong hat.
We do have one more thing, sorry. You can watch Dance with the Stars.
Dance with the Stars is not on tonight.
No, it's next Monday.
It's next Monday. It's next Monday.
We thought it might be both these nine.
No, no, no.
Maybe it knows.
I know it knows.
No, everybody in my house, I thought I'd see it, so I watched it.
The mayor had wanted me to let you know.